All right, good morning, everyone. Good morning, we'll call this meeting to order. This is June 12th, regular edition of Commissioners' Court at 10:00 a.m. And we'll start with the confirmation of roll call. Precinct one?
Here.
Precinct two?
Here.
Precinct three?
Here.
Precinct four?
Present.
And the judges here, so all five of us are here. We will now have our invocation and pledges.
I'm most heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day here in La Baca County. We are so honored to be able to serve you, Lord, in this courthouse that we call the people's house. As we say our pledges here in just a minute, we acknowledge, Lord, that we are one nation, one state, and one county under you for your glory. And for all we do for La Baca County citizens, we thank you, Lord, for giving us the privilege and help us make decisions today and every day as we exist in this county. So, we ask all these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
Now our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my behalf, I pledge allegiance to the community, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Commissioners, if you make sure your mics are turned on for the duration of this event, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Good? We're good? Did I check?
Yes.
All right. Before we officially move into our action item, do we have any announcements or anything from anybody? Any public speakers today? Don't have any? All right, then we'll move into agenda item number one. Discuss and approve designating a representative to calculate the 2023 no new revenue tax rate and a 2023 voter approval tax rate. And I believe we have a volunteer.
I'm on the A. Edward.
Thank you very much.
Your honor, I recommend that we discuss and approve designated recommendation of representative to calculate the no new revenue tax for 2023.
Motion made by precinct two?
Second.
Second by precinct one. All right. Do we have any nominations from the floor? That one's not valid at this moment.
I move that we get our tax assessor collector as the representative to calculate the new tax, no new tax rate, and the voter approval rate.
Okay.
There'll be never session.
All right. We had a, we had a motion from precinct two, second by precinct one. Any other nominations? If not, that not, one nominee will stand correct. So, all those in favor of nominating Deborah Sevchik to be our representative to calculate the 2023 no new revenue tax rate and a 2023 voter approval tax rate, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. And I believe there's two resolutions in our, in our packet that we'll sign to declare her as that, as that designate. Thank you, Deborah Sevchik, for all you do at the tax agency. I know it's a fun job. You don't take, you don't take any complaints over there, do you? Only on Monday through Friday. All right. Agenda item number two, discuss and approve renewal of contract of the five, of the term of five years with Johnson Controls Security Solutions LLC for the maintenance and monitoring of the burglar alarm system. And that's found on page seven in your packet, guys. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the contract for the term of five years with Johnson Controls Security Solutions LLC for the maintenance and monitoring of the burglar alarm system.
Second.
Motion's made by precinct three, second by precinct four, to discuss and approve the renewal of the contract for the term of five years with Johnson Controls Security Solutions LLC for the maintenance and monitoring of the burglar alarm system in the tax assessor collector's office. We should say that. Any discussion?
Your honor, I saw a spot there that mentioned three years. I'm not sure what that was about, if that was...
On the contract?
Yes, sir. I apologize.
That contract's down on page seven of your package. It's a lengthy contract.
Just wanted to be sure there were no, no conflict to that.
How many years have you been getting?
Five years.
Is it five?
I mean, five year term.
You had them for five?
Yes, I had them for five, now it's up for renewal.
Okay.
Do you have the patient number?
I don't. Can't even find it in here. Anyway. This one, it has five and five. Okay. All right, well, I lost what I saw too. I didn't see a spine print, I didn't see anything. Is it, I was reading back here. Anyway, we're all...
Okay, annual service charge.
I can't locate it.
I see, and the signature blank, it says annual service charge, first three years. Johnson Controls agrees to honor the annual service charge for central station monitoring services specified in this agreement for the first three years of the agreement.
Yeah, that's, that's where I saw it, yes. About how it was last term?
It's the same contract.
Right. Oh, it is?
But it's for five years that we are on board with them to monitor and maintain.
That's what I thought, that's why.
Okay. I guess that's the only, that's under the terms and conditions, they're gonna, they'll honor the annual service charge for the first three years. I guess if they had to go up on it, they'd turn back to court.
Yeah, we'll sub, yeah.
Yes.
All right. Any other comments? Any discussion on that? Okay, we had a motion from precinct three, second by precinct four to approve that contract as stated. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, number three, presentation and approval of La Baca County 2023-2024 health insurance renewal with Texas Association of Counties' Health and Employees' Benefits Pool. That's how the auditor's office, I believe we have some tax representatives here today. If you would state your name for the court and...
My name is Daniel Brown. I'm with Summit Agency, offices of Catherine Bailey. She's been brokering the agencies with Blue Cross for the county for over the last 35 years. And over the last, I don't know, maybe close to 10, Blue Cross has been working with TAC as well as the county. And I'm just gonna give a quick run-through over the last year regarding the county's health insurance. And if you could just look at the handout.
And this, real quick, the handout is on page, starts on page 18 of your online packet. Sorry.
Your honor, I make a motion that we discuss and approve.
Okay.
Item number three, the La Baca County 2324 health insurance renewal with the Texas Association of Counties' Health and Employee Benefits Pool.
Okay, second by precinct three? Motion made by precinct two, second by precinct three to have this presentation. So, let me proceed.
Okay. For the 12 months prior to the March claims report, La Baca County paid, you see the figure there, 1,670,153 in premiums, with the TAC and Blue Cross pool paying approximately 145,985 in claims. About an 88 to 89 percent loss ratio. The group had 31 insureds with over 10,000 in claims and three with over 100,000. So, even with claims that high, as a result of this, the overall increase will only be 6.2 on the medical. And being that I do a lot more of non-grandfathered plans, the Affordable Care Act compliant, AKA Obamacare plans, we're seeing every year 10 to 12 percent increases. So, we like, Kathy and I, and I'm sure TAC too, likes the grandfathered status, and if you ever change from the grandfathered plan, you can't come back to it. And moving on, the dental.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, can I ask a question? So, is this, is this basically revenue neutral? Premiums in, claims paid?
So, I can kinda address that. So, every dollar that the county contributes for the premiums or the rates every month for the employee, every dollar that you, that we receive from y'all, we use 94 cents of that dollar to pay out claims. The other 6 percent is used for the administrative costs of the plan. Does that help address your question?
It does. The follow-up to that would be, so, this is a pool, right?
Yes.
So, we're pooling everyone's experience?
Yes, we have around 231 groups in the pool. That's around 191 counties and the rest are districts or other governmental entities. It equates to about 48,000 lives. And so, the pooling factor really benefits the county in that we use that 48,000 lives to go out to all of our vendor partners such as Blue Cross and now to help negotiate the best rates for the county versus maybe the county individually going out with far less lives.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes perfect sense. In other words, we have a much better...
Yes, we get a better rate.
Much, much better rate, much better opportunity to negotiate that rate because of the numbers involved.
Correct.
So, we can get, you know, economy to scale, if you will.
Yes, and, and just to, to feed off of that, we do act as counties, so anytime we need, we need to go out for RFP, for our product, we can do so just as you all can. And so, recently, we took out our ancillary products out to bid, so the dental, vision, and the life insurance. We received a better discount by moving those to Blue Cross. So, the dental and the vision were with Blue Cross already, we moved the life insurance to Blue Cross. So, that provided additional savings that will be passed on to you all this year on, on those benefits.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
And for dental, the dental insurance, you had a very good year with that, and there's now a reduction in those premiums by 5.6 percent. And the voluntary vision plan to the county will have no cost. Those rates will stay the same as well as the life rates. Section four talks about the TAC Health and Employee Benefits Pool, going back to what Commissioner Faircloth was saying, and how TAC also takes care of all the fees, if you look at point five below, for ACA reporting, ACA fees. They, they do a really good job of making sure the county's always in compliance with these fees and with these rules and regulations. And if you look to the next page on our agency's agenda, Kathy and myself and TAC two believes that we're probably looking at a trend of 7 to 9 percent at next year's renewal. But that all just depends on claims and everything between now and then as well. And, yes.
Can I back up just one? Go back to item four, please.
Okay.
The very last line of that paragraph, would you maybe highlight that?
Yes, this is regarding the surplus distribution.
Yeah, and I can speak to that. The surplus distribution, so, of course, we act as a pool, we're a not-for-profit association. So, any funds that we receive from you all and we have a surplus, we give back to all of our members. So, historically, for the past five years, for La Baca County, we have given back $186,766 as a form of a surplus distribution. The way that you receive that is based off of longevity and then your claims experience that you've had with, through the year of that year. I will say that this year, it's been a hard year for the pool. Our pool needed amount was 6.2 percent. Y'all are actually getting the pool needed amount, 6.2 percent for the renewal. The surplus distribution is based off of board approval. That typically happens at a board meeting in July, and then that gets passed on to you all in August. So, we know, we won't know for sure if there will be a surplus distribution for this year, but last year, based off of the information that Daniel provided, you did receive 56,000.
That's true, okay. Well, outstanding.
No guarantees, but...
No, I understand, I think, so, yeah, so if it's, if it's available...
Yes, if you give it up.
Then it's, it's good. Almost like a dividend.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, right. Question, who comprises the board?
So, it's a combination of elected officials. So, we've got judges, commissioners, we've got auditors, tax assessor collectors, and treasurers. We have a total of, I believe, 11 to 12 members on that board that helps to make the decisions for the TAC pool.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioners, you're also very good points, and if you jump down to seven about the past, or no, no, seven, yeah, you'll see that over the last 20 years, 2010 was definitely not a good year. That increase was over 10 percent, and 2010 was 12 percent. And I don't think TAC helped with the counting back then. I don't think it's been that long, yeah. So, once TAC took over, you know, we're, we're getting in single digits, you know, for any bad years with the help of TAC managing the pool. Yeah. Oh, sure.
I haven't yet.
Okay.
Forever.
Okay. I apologize, yeah.
Good work.
I can't remember if I had the breakfast on my... Thank you, Shane, I'm sorry about that. And any questions? I mean, also, my contact information's on here, if any of you have any questions as well on, on the first page.
And I do just wanna make one comment. As I mentioned earlier, that we do take our vendor products out to bid. So, one change that La Baca County will see this year is on the life insurance products. So, we currently are with Voya Financial. We are moving those products for the basic life of $10,000 in accidental death and dismemberment to Blue Cross or Dearborn. So, that's one change that you'll be seeing, but there's no impact to the rate. And then the voluntary life, or the voluntary vision products are gonna be reducing by 26 percent. Again, that's voluntary, so that's if the member or the employee less that coverage, they'll see a 26 percent reduction in that rate. So, it's at about $4.58 this year.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions of the court? Just my observation, just these rates seem to be pretty comparable to the private sector as well, the kind of inflationary rates in healthcare that we're seeing across the board.
Also, for example, I have a bonds PPO, and my deductible is $7,000. So, when I look at, you know, the deductible of 680 for what you have now, I mean, this is still a Cadillac of a health plan, if you will, too, that you have.
And that's probably the biggest perk of working for the county is this. This is why most of us are here. I hate to say that, but that, that does seem to be pretty mean true throughout the county. You, you come here for benefits.
Now is high as 8,550, so...
Yeah, awesome. One of the questions, I thought, so, Blue Cross Blue Shield, are they a third-party administrator?
So, we, we kinda serve as the TPA, so we use Blue Cross and Blue Shield to access their claims administration and their network, and we take on, on the rest.
We're basically self-insured, correct?
No, they're fully funded. So, we take on all the risk for you all. Our pool itself is self-insured, so we pay all of our claims for every member that is fully insured in the pool, but we take on that risk for you all.
Okay. So, the pool is self-insured, you're saying?
Correct.
Full disclosure, he's an insurance executive.
Great question.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, we had a motion by precinct two, second by precinct three. Any other further discussion?
Can you, can you include in your motion the renewal plan and the renewal option on this page?
What page is that?
It's the last page of the handout.
Last page of the handout.
Oh, I'm sorry, the third page of the handout was the, the current and renewal plan.
Seven hundred G2.
Yes, that's it.
And the second file, so the renewal rate is also plan and option. Plan 700 G2, option for your prescription.
Option 4A G2?
Yes. RX 4A G2, prescription.
Okay, what about the dental plan as well? Okay.
Okay. Your honor, I revised my motion to specify that we're renewing Medical Plan 700 G2, Prescription Plan Option 4A G2, and the Dental Plan, Plan One with Ortho. And then, the Vision Plan. I don't see a number of that.
Vision Value Plan. Value from the value. Okay.
That's a move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let me just go, it's confusing, but...
700 G2.
Okay. Motion made by precinct two, second by precinct, originally was three, but originally go, second by precinct one. To approve the La Baca County 2023-2024 health insurance renewal with Texas Association of Counties' Health and Employee Benefits Pool, specifically naming Plan 700 G2 as our medical plan. The prescription drug plan is Option 4A G2. Dental plan is Plan One with Ortho. And the Vision Plan is the Vision Value Plan. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much for working with us, and we appreciate all you do for the county. All right, item number four, out of the auditor's office, this is discuss and approve a quote from Toddler Technologies for time and attendance to be implemented after October 1st, 2023. We have a motion to bring this to the floor.
Yes.
Yes. Motion made by precinct one?
Second.
Second by precinct... Second by precinct two. Any discussion?
Discussion, or the question you may have. If you have a quote in front of you, this is a Toddler Technologies product that will be added on to our in-house financial system, the District Department Technologies. It will be the timekeeping system. So instead of filling out paper timesheets, each department will get able to log on to a portal. And each employee will log on to a portal and put their time. And then the department head or elected official will then approve the time, be able to edit through the time, and send it on to our department for it to process payroll.
It'll make it more streamlined and more efficient that way.
Absolutely. There will be no more checking of timesheets.
Is this, is this all employees?
All employees.
Okay. So that means that we will input the time cards?
Your employee will clock in and clock out at your bar with a workstation. When they come in, they will clock in. When they leave, they will clock out.
And there's an option for cellphone use as well.
There is an option for cellphone.
Your employees could opt to use their cellphone to clock in and clock out.
Okay, okay.
This is an old technology, basically, we're just now implementing. And I would just say, in the private sector, this is the Kellymont equipment uses. They clock in with their phones. And then they can see real-time how many hours they've worked. When they get to 40, hey, they can take off if they want to take off.
Each employee has the option to log on to the portal at any time and look at their time that they've clocked in and clocked out. If they miss time, say they, say a rowhand has to go out in the middle of the night, they then let their supervisor or commissioner know, and then you edit their time accordingly.
So only we make edits?
Uh, yes.
Supervisor.
You are the only one that makes edits, correct.
Okay.
Basically, it'll probably, if worst comes to worst, we'll have a desktop in each precinct bar for us.
Is that what you're saying? Is that what you're, I'm sorry.
Oh, everybody, you got one point.
Yeah, you're saying workstation, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
It's an internet-based system, so if you have a computer now with internet that your employees can use, then you already have it set up. Okay, yeah.
Only precinct one thing that won't need to get us, we use precinct four. Only that.
But they could use their cellphones, too, if they chose.
And use their cell.
And we have some surplus computers we can even set up if we needed to. So I take it there's no tutorial for this?
There won't be a tutorial.
There will be, okay, great. Yeah, great. This tends to make employees more accountable, because they're clocking in real-time. Instead of filling out a timesheet two weeks after the fact in that paper system that we don't know if it's accurate. I think it's great. I just know that there's a learning curve on both ends.
For that one, we like to...
There's several counties already that's been using this for several years.
Yeah.
And the biggest crisis that we're cutting out on the processing time for payroll significantly for my office.
Yes. And the system that I've used in the private sector is you can set parameters in there, and if your operating hours are from eight to five, and someone hasn't clocked out at 5:15, it alerts the manager, hey, there's something wrong. Are they still out there in the field? Why did they clock out? Either they forgot to clock out, and you can address that the next morning. If you get that system alert, it won't let you clock in the next time. They have to come to the manager. If they didn't, if they failed to clock out, they have to see you in the morning to override that, to say, hey, they forgot to do something. So it's a good accountability system. Generally, it happens once or twice, and then they stop doing that. Yeah, I think so. This is not a local example of AI integration, is it? Artificial intelligence is concerned. Artificial intelligence. Does that mean that we won't be seeing Brooke as much as it? I think we could use some artificial intelligence around here.
We all love you, love La Vaca County. And you must know, there's so many...
Any other questions or discussions? And that's in your packet on page 62.
And just to make you know, this is just a quote. This is not secondstone. I think the quote includes some hard, some hardware, some biometric and barcode readers that are going to be taken out, because we're going to use, you know, the workstations or your software.
Okay.
Unless we do decide to need a reader at an annex at the courthouse or in another department. But I think most people are going to want to do through the quote.
You know, some discussions we've had in the judge's office over the last couple of weeks is, you know, 40 years ago, if you applied to work someplace, one of the questions you asked them, do you have transportation to get to work? You know, that was important. Could you, and now it's going to be, do you have a cellphone? Do you, you know, will you allow your cellphone to be utilized in the workplace? One of the things that this does, too, if you allow an employee to track, to use your cellphone to clock in with, then you also, that employee allows you to know where they are when they clocked in. So that could work for rowhands. If they start their day somewhere at a job site, you can know that they clocked in at the job site.
This does allow...
It allows for that.
Like a geographic area that we can put. So if an employee is within that geographic area, when they clock in, you know their work.
Right.
It's like...
So it's a two-way street, so you can actually check. We do it for safety, because if someone goes out there to work on a tractor, something will go wrong, I don't even know where they are. So it's a safety concern. But it's also, it's an accountability concern. Are you working at John Doe's farm today? Or like you said, you work, so. And it could help you guys, too, track where you guys are at any given time if you need to get hold of somebody, so.
Shayna, this annual fee, that's $13,002?
Yes, sir.
With a stuck startup fee of $53,000, is that correct?
That is correct. You will take out the $32,000, though, for your barcode readers, who are not going to use that.
Okay.
But the recurring fees is, will be a year, annual fee that is prepaid to Tyler to be able to use their software.
Okay.
So for clarification, this is a quote, and then between now and the time we implement it, we can take out some things as needed, so. Got you.
The more employees that would use their phones, probably the cheaper it would get instead of a station.
Yes, and we're...
And from personal experience, having that on their phones, that they can review that. The employee can check in at night, and they can say, hey, I poured 32 hours, and they can kind of start scheduling their time. It works for us in the private sector.
It comes up to give about $90, roughly about $90 to an employee a year.
And just so that you know, a lot of counties use the exact same system. Diba County uses this same system. Gonzales County is still behind times. We're ahead of them.
We're ahead of somebody?
We're ahead of Gonzales, and they still use timesheets.
Man, that's... Alrighty, man, that was good news there.
What about comp time, for my employees who work overtime? Was that, it's just going?
No, it will be addressed, yes, yeah. Your comp time will be addressed.
We're going to have a whole comp time discussion coming up shortly. We can address it in the budget deal.
If we were on this system right now, it'd be up for the head department heads to go ahead and input that off of what the employee did, like if they're called out on a weekend.
Is that something I would have to input?
Yes.
No, it, your employee just clocks in and clocks out. It would then calculate the comp time. Forty overtime, it's a little...
You were on vacation, you didn't miss a commission court meeting, but we've been discussing budgets, and we may be doing away with the existing comp time system. We may pay it, end up paying that off. We've got a lot of employees are accruing comp time because they're shorthanded, and they're really entitled to that time. Yeah, they're really entitled to that pay. So that, so we're going to talk about that, and then that'll come up between now and the end of this budget cycle. And then we'll go to something a little bit different. We're probably going to go into an overtime system where you're paying your part, because those employees are working overtime. That's what's happening, so.
But answer your question. They clock in, clock out, then you review if it's correct or not, and then it comes to us to process whether it's comp or overtime payout. System doesn't call.
All right, any other discussions, comments? If not, I had a motion from precinct one, segment by precinct two to discuss and approve the quote for Toddler Technologies time and attendance to be implemented after October 1st, 2023. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And the entire HR department is now pleased. We're going to save some time, hopefully, there. All righty. Agenda item number five, discuss and approve giving Hallsville Festival of Lights permission to host the 26th anniversary of Festival of Lights on Saturday, November 25th, 2023, on the courthouse campus. Do I have a motion? That's on page 67 of your packet. Don't be afraid to speak up.
I'm making a move.
All we have was a letter, a letter drafted by, excuse me, the Festival of Lights to us, requesting that date.
They give them permission to decorate within the courthouse.
This is for actual, the Festival of Lights activity on the courthouse square.
They give them permission to decorate inside the courthouse also.
Does it say that as well?
You know, the banisters and Christmas trees for different businesses to put in there.
And also permission to host Santa and Mr. Claus from 12 noon to 4 p.m. on that Saturday.
Okay. Well, do you want to read this letter, Mr. Ziegel?
I don't care. Aye, we would like to see if we could have permission to host the 26th Annual Festival of Lights on Saturday, November 25th, 2023. We are seeking permission to begin decorating the courthouse gazebo and potentially the inside of the courthouse, starting around October 22nd, which includes, but not limited to, the sound system for holiday music. We would like to ensure the use of electricity. It is also permitted to keep lights from 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. nightly from November 25th to January, November 25th of '23 to January 7th of '24. We would also like permission to host Santa and Misery's Santa Claus from 12 noon to 4 p.m. on said Saturday. In addition, we would like permission to offer a Christmas tree decorating contest for businesses in Hallsville that would potentially have multiple trees located throughout the three or four levels of the courthouse in a decoration of stairs, manisters. Businesses of Hallsville would be responsible for the decorating and cleanup of a Christmas tree. We are hoping for more participation from the community this year, since last year was the first time doing so. Thank you, Michelle Lanning.
All right.
For the Festival of Lights.
You will also need to address us needing a key.
A key situation.
Or not a key.
Think we've done that last year?
We did.
For one person in charge?
Do you want to make some motion, include that in the motion to...
Either that, or we can do a motion separate, when we know who's actually getting the key, but...
Yeah, we could.
Yes, whatever, we do, we need to address that.
All right. I would say let's stick with the script here, that this is what they asked for, and we'll do the key at a separate time.
Somebody got to handle vectors.
Sorry, question.
Is it possible that we could have an electrician, certified electrician, before they turn the lights on? I've noticed for the last couple of years, that Brooks started to use a lot of extension cords. That really, I don't think it's provided enough, or a lot. So in, in your outdoor extension cord, would be safer in terms of electricity, because they're just using, just real cheap extension cords. We worry about an extension fire, trying out, just run out of oil in place. Maybe have an electrician just kind of check things out until they turn the lights off.
I think we could have our in-house maintenance department look into that as well. So I don't think it's a problem.
I'm asking for certified electrician.
All right, we're going to stick to the dates here that they've got asked, and then we're going to give them permission, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the request for all these dates of using the courthouse and setting it for all things Festival of Lights?
I make a motion to approve giving Hallsville Festival of Lights permission to host the 26th Anniversary Lights FOL on Saturday, November 25th, 2023, and everything pertaining to the letter.
Okay. Second, second?
Second.
Motion made by precinct three, segment precinct four, to approve the giving Hallsville Festival of Lights permission to host the 26th Anniversary Festival of Lights on Saturday, November 25th, 2023, and also have access to the courthouse during the times requested to decorate and for having Mr. and Mrs. Claus in our building on that Saturday as well.
I will make one comment.
Yes, sir.
On that, for decorating the manisters, that when they do, that there's no obstruction on top of the banister to where, you know, people hold on to, so that would cause an accident.
I agree on that. Sounds like we need to have some oversight over some of this. So we'll definitely get facilities involved as we go forward. Now, the motions from precinct three, segment by precinct four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. All right. Agenda item number six is going to be tabled to, to the 26th of June.
26th?
Yeah, we had a scheduling conflict there. So agenda item number 26 would be, agenda item number six, 2022 Public Health Region Eight Annual Report, that's going to be given on the 26th. That's been tabled. Move on to agenda item number seven, Presentation of the Texas Historical Commission 2022 Distinguished Service Award to La Vaca County Historical Commission. Do we have members of the historical commission here? If you would, come forward.
I'll make one more.
Motion by precinct two, segment by precinct one. All right.
Got it.
And let me see if I can find the award here. A second. My computer timed out. Yeah.
Hey, we're talking about a front. Get a front.
We're going to get you up front for it real quick. I was just going to read what they, they sent a letter with this. In the letter, it says, Dear Judge Mudd, we are pleased, we are pleased to announce that La Vaca County Historical Commission has earned a distinguished service award for the 2022 year of service. While all county historical commission efforts are valued, DSA's knowledge acknowledged above average of this group's performance on a statewide analysis, there were 83 awards approved out of 197 applicants. So this is one out of 197 applicants, and they approved 83. And I just want to commend them for what they do. It's amazing. Y'all have your work cut out, as Doug is, will tell you. Doug is chairing the committee to restore the courthouse at this moment, and we have issues. We'll discuss some of that during the next, during light item number 12. But anyway, it's a daunting task. It is difficult to have a 126-year-old building combined with new technology and all the things that go with it. And thank y'all for what you do and for preserving this beautiful building. This is a true treasure in La Vaca County. So we will present this award to you and hopefully get a picture. All right. Thank you all. So with that, we had a motion from precinct two, segment by precinct one, to present that award. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, now, next we have some subdivision issues to take care of. Number eight, discuss and approve certificate exemption from subdivision requirements for Consuelo Pena. That's out of precinct two. That would be found on page 86 of your packet.
Your Honor, I move that we discuss and/or approve the certificate exemption from subdivision requirements for Consuelo Pena in the attachment here.
Okay. Motion made by precinct... Motion made by precinct two.
Second.
Second by precinct one. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, basically a forty, fifty acre tract. It, it's, uh, it fronts twelve ninety-five, Funder Market Road, twelve ninety-five, from Kaminsky, uh, to Paha, uh, twelve ninety-five. A is a dead end road, and so he's basically, uh, selling fifteen acres to a neighbor, that, a neighboring, uh, adjoining piece of land. And, uh, so the one, he'll retain one track and put one track on the market.
Okay.
So, there's really no development here, and it's, uh, it's all fronted by, can, there may be no driveways or accesses, uh, established on any of the roads, so.
It's fronted by, uh, FM twelve ninety-five.
Yes.
And then there's, is there a side county road, twelve ninety-five?
Yeah, twelve ninety-five, a dead end road there that's.
D?
B.
B.
Twelve ninety-five B.
Twelve ninety-five B, okay. All right. So, based on the criteria that you've got here, it does not meet, I mean, it, uh, meets exemption.
It's exempt from subdivision, subdivision ordinances.
Okay. So, a motion made by precinct two, second by precinct one, any further discussion? All right, so to approve that, that certificate of exemption, we need a vote. Um, all those in favor for approving the exemption, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Next, we have another subdivision, um, discussing, number nine, Discuss and Approve Certificate of Exemption from Subdivision Requirements for Ryan Rose, and that's out of precinct one. That's found on page ninety-one.
Your Honor, I move that we, uh, approve a certificate of exemption for subdivision requirements for Ryan Rose. This is off County Road, uh, one thirty-seven. It borders his property now. It has access to County Road, one thirty-seven. All, uh, properties there have access to a public road, so it is exempt from, uh, subdivision rules.
Okay.
My second.
Motion was made by precinct one, second by precinct two, to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Ryan Rose. Any further discussion? Again, same thing, those, those, those properties have, uh, access out of the properties, the smallest track is five point five acres, there's a six point thirty-three, two acres, and twelve point seven, two eight. So, all that would fall into, uh, exemption status. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll, uh, motion made by precinct one, second by precinct two, to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Ryan Rose. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Before we move on, I do want to say that we, the, the judge's office has approves and exemptions from the first of the year through now. Um, they have not gone through court, but they were, they do meet their exemptions. So, I think this is a better way of doing it, bringing them to court, so everyone's and, uh, understands what's going on. We have court every two to three weeks. Uh, the title companies are having some issues, but they can't close unless we've, we've given them exemption. They don't want to be liable for, for passing something without our approval, so that's why these exemptions are important. Okay? And it, it does allow the community to know what's going on, especially if they're going to divide them to sell them. Okay, next we have item number ten, Discuss and Approve Revised Platt from Oak Forest Estates.
This one's a little different, Your Honor.
Okay. That's going to be paid, I was just, that's going to be paid, found on page ninety-four as a start of that. If you'd look and follow along here. I go, uh, do we have a motion to bring this to the floor?
Yes, I make a motion to bring it to the court.
Okay. Motion made by precinct one.
Second.
Second by precinct two. Um, any discussion?
Yes, this is off County Road, one twenty. It, uh, it's a large tract of land. It was brought to court, uh, back in January, maybe, and at the time, everybody was in agreement, but since that time, uh, two family members, was it two family members taught, uh, did not agree to sell their property. They agreed to keep their property. Everything else has basically stayed the same, and all of it has access to County Road, one twenty, which exempts it from, uh, uh...
Subdivision regs. Right.
So, with that, we have one problem with the plat, though. The plat has, uh, Liz Kova as the county clerk. We need to fix that. Uh, we can approve it and sign it at a later date, is that correct?
Yes, if all the court needs.
And all the court members need to sign it also.
I might change my name, but the whole thing is the name, the name, it's all in there.
Yes, needs to be on there.
So, if we approve this provision, can this stay in our, our office? Do we sign it? Is that fine?
Yeah, it could stay in there.
Okay.
Once it's signed, uh, he could come to the office and follow, pay for it, he's required.
And just so we understand, the court's already approved this, but there was a problem executing that plan, instead we go back and revise it?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion or comments? Is it perfectly clear?
None for me.
None?
None, it makes sense.
Okay. So, we had a motion made by precinct one, second by precinct two, to approve the revised plat from Oak Forest Estates, pending the wording is, is reprinted, and we can approve this now and sign it later date. Okay, so all those in favor of that, uh, approval of the revised plat, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Number eleven, Accept the Monetary Donation in Amount of One Thousand Dollars from Beta Sigma Phi to Levacca County EMS to be used as unbudgeted revenue. And that's found on page ninety-six.
Your Honor, I still move that we accept the monetary donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from Beta Sigma Phi to Levacca County EMS to be used as unbudgeted revenue.
Motion made by precinct two.
Second.
Second by precinct one, to accept the monetary donation of any amount of one thousand dollars from Beta Sigma Phi to Levacca County EMS to be used as unbudgeted revenue. Any discussion, comments? Uh, we want to thank Beta Sigma Phi, now they do a countywide garage sale every year and raise a lot of money for a lot of different organizations, and so, uh, it's thankless work. I've had to move furniture on behalf of them as well. Um, but, uh, anyway, thank you for that monetary donation, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Again, on behalf of EMS, uh, they, they appreciate all those donations, it helps in all kinds of ways. So, if you want to donate to EMS or the Sheriff's Department, those are great avenues to spend your money. They will, we will accept those donations, most of the time. All right. Number twelve, Discuss and Approve Building Repair Updates. Uh, Mr. Doug Kubicek, do you want to go? Do you even want to discuss this?
He looks, he looks a little moldy today.
He looks a little moldy, that's what they would say.
Um, things are progressing, we're moving forward with a lot of the projects, uh, not that it's a can of worms, but in a way it is. Uh, the more we look at what has not been done, and, and a good example of this is County Auditor, you're, you're, we're trying to, trying to get the county into the twenty-fourth century with everything, and what y'all are going to do with the Tyler thing is, although it's not with the building, it helps everything get moved forward. I commend you for doing that. Yeah, but, back to the building. Uh, yeah, there's some issues we've been having, and, uh, I'm, I'm going to say this, with mold, and, uh, it's gotten to a point where it's pretty serious, and we're going to, I'll have a better handle on it this afternoon. Uh, one of the gentleman from Self's Pro.
Surf Pro was here.
Surf, okay, yeah. Uh, we'll be coming in this afternoon, and he's got a lot of experience with this. We're going to look at it again, and, uh, we'll, we'll proceed from there, and, uh, I think what we're going to do with the next step, if he says, yes, this is, you have an issue with the mold, we're going to test it, just to make sure. We want to have a test sent off to a lab or something, uh, just to make sure, you know, and I, I don't know what the process is there, but I'll find out this afternoon, uh, in terms of that, and, uh, so that, that's kind of where we're at with it. The doors, uh, we're still pushing forward on that. Uh, I think we had H and H come by, I still haven't heard anything from, uh, the Red River Restoration Company out of Austin, and, uh, I'm waiting to hear from them. Uh, so, things are moving forward, but, uh, it's just going to take a little time.
So, a lot of things behind the scenes, a lot of companies are coming in, looking at things and evaluating.
Correct, correct. That, that, and again, there's a certain protocol that, not that we have to follow it, but the Texas Historical Commission is kind of like, uh, over here on the side, anything we have to do with the building, uh, I, we have to run it through them a little bit, just to give them, say, they'll say, oh, yeah, okay, you could do that, you know? Again, that's just opening, keeping the door open for any future grant money that we want to get, maybe apply for, yeah, down the road. Is it a question?
I have a question, Doug.
Yeah.
Is there any possibility of an emergency appropriation in a situation like this?
Yeah, you know, that's, I'm going to look into that. Right now, i- if, this is, you know, if we would have had a tropical storm or something, yes, but at this point, probably not. I can't, I can't say that for sure, but that's a good question, we can look into that.
Maybe could, doesn't it, uh, um, fringe on actually a public health issue?
Yes, that, that, that's what I was just going to say, it's, we're, we're right there up against the, the push, uh, with public health, yeah.
Okay, are you talking about the exemption a bit, or are you talking?
No, not, not really, we're just, I want to make sure that, uh, I don't quite understand the question, but, uh...
Oh, I mean, I didn't know, I'm just talking, you know, what is exemption one?
No, no, I, no, I'm talking about emergency appropriation from Texas Historical Commission.
Yeah.
Oh.
That, that was my reference.
Right. You know, and, and they, again, they're not, they don't have any funds to give out, but they could put us in touch with, again, if it was some type of federal money that might be out there, being a public building.
Yes.
That opens up some other.
Yeah, maybe some other avenues.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah.
The mold issue is, is, we have to expedite it, we need to take care of this right away.
Right.
And I want to clarify, I think prior to my arrival, we got a clean bill of health on mold, and then the next thing you know, I think a chiller went out, and we had some issues with chiller, and next thing mold just presents itself.
Right.
And you can tell, like, today, even this, this countertop has got a little moisture to it.
Right.
It's, it's a, we're in a high humidity environment.
I, I know what you're saying, right there. You know, how could this happen?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not an electrician or not an A.C. person, but I did do a bunch of reading, and, uh, hey, I Googled it, what can I say? And, and so, I, I learned a lot about chillers, and, and it comes down to the fact that to, to you, to utilize the, the cool air, it gets pulled into the system, and there's the device in there that basically, and again, I'm really simplifying it, that regulates the amount of moisture.
Yes.
Okay? And that, a little part of that chiller broke, and I got replaced, but, yeah, the damage has, has been done. But I think it, it may have been out or defective long before all of this, because we've been having some issues with black stuff on the walls where the vents are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, do, do we have a timeline at this point of when we're going to?
I'll, I'll know more this afternoon.
Because our concern, I think District Court has a trial coming up, June twenty-sixth, and so.
Okay, yes.
We can have an alternative location on standby, the annex building would be equipped for that.
That, that might be something to consider, you know, or it...
Well, I want to say, I notified that, I notified our two district judges on Friday of what we potentially have, and then I told them we'd have, by today, we'd have some kind of timeline for them, so I'd like, but.
Yeah.
If we could get a timeline of what it's going to take to rectify this, or do we need to start moving things that direction?
Yes, good point.
The good news is we have two separate buildings, and we have, uh...
Yes, go ahead.
So, what areas are, is this room at, or where are we?
Where's it located?
Yeah, oh, uh, I'm a district courtroom.
District.
Yeah, and the judges, I mean, the district judge's office, but then there's other places in the building where third floor, uh, there, there's areas.
Three and a half more floors.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, the higher up you go, the worse it gets, uh, third floor, uh, I was told, I was told that the third floor judge's suite, which is the district judge's office, when they're having a trial, they'll use that for the week, um, is bad.
Yeah.
Like, don't go in there.
Basically, the, the first crew that came in said, y'all need to stay out of that office.
And that was prior to his information, so.
Yeah.
That's why today we need to have some kind of understanding of what are we dealing with and what's the timeframe.
We'll, we'll have a better handle on all of that this afternoon.
And I want to thank the district clerk's office for alerting us to, uh, they, they had some sinus issue, issues, so.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, I just, uh, I'm, I'm thinking about maybe, as you meet this afternoon, the, the potential of air scrubbers or ozone machines or different things that you could do.
Yes.
To, uh, you know, disarm the, the mold that's here.
Right, right.
You know?
That, and that, that's what we're going to find out this afternoon.
Okay.
And they do have the devices, again, God, this is typical, they subcontract it out to somebody else.
Yeah.
The Surf Pro does that, but then they, they have somebody, they actually come in and they'll have a, uh, device, they put in the vent, then it, the ductwork itself, not the vent, the ductwork.
Yes.
And it scrubs it and vacuums it out all at the same time, and it's self-contained into a thing, so the mold doesn't get spread all over, but, uh, yeah, because there's no way to get rid of it. You can clean it with cleaner on the wall, but that doesn't, it, it's, it's there in the, the ductwork, is where it's at, something.
And the only thing I will say, is Lori Whiskis here, district clerk, is that, uh, district, district court will have first dibs over whatever courtroom that, that y'all would need if you need to move for some duration of time, whether it's this one or the annex and, uh, the county court and probate court, we can, we can adjust our schedules and move accordingly.
Yeah. I don't know what their timetable would be if we proceed to that, then, you know...
Well, I think we need, we need to know more information, that we need to know extent of it, what is the cleanup period, and can, do we need to vacate those floors while they're cleaning it, or is it something that's?
Yes.
We haven't heard word.
Yes, that, that's the...
Okay. And if we need to call a special meeting, we can, if we need to.
Okay, I was going to say, could we possibly call, have a special meeting if we need to?
It, by all means.
Okay.
Because like I said, if we can't shut the court down, courthouse system down, just because of something like this.
No, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have a question?
Do all the ductworks, when I said ductworks?
Yes.
Vents, are they all connected together?
More or less, yes, more or less.
So, if it's on the third floor, or it's on this floor, or that floor, or that floor?
Exactly, and, and part of that device is in the attic, okay? The other part's on the ground, and between those two, that, that's, that is get, see air to the whole building.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we've got issues in the basement with water seepage, and I don't know where that water's coming from.
And that's, that's not helping any.
That's not helping either, yeah.
It's, and again, and thank you to the Historical Commission for working on this, I mean, it's an old building, and it's, we have new technology in here that's, we're trying to work with.
Really?
It's just, it's difficult. I can tell you just from one of, one of our technology meetings we had, I think the phrase was, what is the best thing to do, and it was to dose it down and start over, if you want to secure the building, um, but we don't, we don't want to do that.
Yeah, and, and I, I will say this, we're, we're not the only one for ha- having these issues. There, there are other courthouses in the same situation where, uh, and it's, it's like, you got to be on top of it and be proactive, you know, having a work scheduled, having somebody check everything every day, uh, you know, there is a computer system that we could, and I've seen it, Maylene has, has looked and showed me, you, we could check to see if the vents, it'll tell you if the vents need cleaning, the, the vents right here, but you got to check it. You got to pull that program up, and it'll do the diagnostics for you, and it'll tell you, you need, it's time to clean this vent, but again, that's something that, once a month, that needs to be done, or once every week, especially in the summer, run the diagnostics to see the test, so.
Doug, do you know whether or not the, uh, system that's in the attic, uh, is filtered?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
And how often are those?
That's something else, yeah.
I think, what, once a month?
I, I don't know.
Twice? When they go through and change all the filters?
Filters are changed in the office at least once a month, three or four times.
Those up there, is that?
Yeah.
You just replace those, or can you clean them and put them back in?
That I don't know. Yeah, that, that's something else I need to look into.
Well, like I said, it's a daunting task, and we thank you for volunteering your time to help us.
I'd rather be out in the field, but, yeah. But this is my, my building, and it's everybody's building, and everybody's health is important. And, but it's, it's just one of those things, living in South Texas. We live out in West Texas, no problem.
Yeah.
Nothing will grow.
Nothing will grow.
Everything would just dry out.
Dry out. And, and, you know. But it's good for your skin, all the humidity in there is good for your skin, so. Thank y'all.
Anything else?
No, that, that's kind of up, that's where we're at. There's always.
And what about, while you're there, what about the door situation? We're still.
Yeah, the door situation, we're still, I mean, I'd like to get, I'd like to give a call. Again, this all takes time. Call Red River, find out what's going on, you know? They've got, I don't know, I like what they're saying. I like what Weaver and Jacobs said. This is going to be one of those things with the doors, I think. And again, it's up to the commissioners' court how they want to address the security issues. But we're going to take a little bit from this one, a little bit from that one, and, you know, look at it and go, ah, this is going to work for us.
There you go.
You know?
Yeah.
It may not work for Gonzales County or any other county, but it's going to work for us. And this is what we want until we can come up with something better.
For all those who are going to make sure we're on the same page with Doug, Judge Leck, and Merrill Richardson, we put those three on the committee to help restore the building, but they're also attached to the security team as well, because all of this has a security effect in it.
Right.
So they're, whatever, we're privy to, they're privy to, as far as, because it's going to have to go that way.
Yeah, and the report from Judge Olden was, was really good. I did have the THC look at that, and they, they had, oh yeah, we do, they liked. They, they said every county needs to have that done.
Yep, that's a must. But our doors, I mean, this door never gets used, and this needs repair.
Yeah.
It's just, it just deteriorated sitting there.
Right.
So, it's, anyway, thank you, thank you for your work, Doug. We appreciate it. Any other building repair updates? Do we have anything from annex? I don't think you guys have taken action on that yet. Precinct one, sheriff. The annex subway building is still loaded with materials, correct? Whenever, whenever Commissioner one's ready. Y'all waiting for the heat, to get the temperature to heat up a little bit?
Say when, we'll go get it.
Yep, you guys are in charge. We're putting, so if we can't move forward on that till we clean that annex out, that subway building.
Subway.
Subway. Some of it needs to be dumpsters, some of it needs to be stored for later usage. Some of the materials in there. So, all right. With that, I have nothing else to add. Devin motion to approve that building repair update as given. Do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Motion from precinct three.
Second.
Second by precinct four, to approve the building repair updates as provided. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, discuss and approve the budget process. We'll make this short and sweet. This is publicly to address what we've done. May 17, I request for budgets, I request for all department heads and officials to submit their budget requests to the, to the judge's office when out on May 17. They were due in my office by June 2. We did give, grant some exceptions for some people that were on vacation. And then what I'm doing from June 5 to June 23, we can, we're having individual meetings with department heads and officials with their individual budgets. So we understand what their needs are, what their requests are. And then we'll compile that data into a informal document that is basically from the judge's office. And somewhere on July 10 through the 12, instead of having budget workshop meetings that last three days, we'll probably have a budget workshop morning that we can go over that budget in detail, those requests. We may invite a few officials to come speak, especially if they're way over budget or something, you know, that needs to be dealt with on the court level. But we'll, we can discuss all those budgets at that time. And that'll be somewhere July 10 through the 12. And then by July 25, we'll have that posted online. Or that'd be on the agenda on the 25th, correct? Okay, anyway. The next steps is, we're having, we're still having our meetings from June 5 to June 23 with department heads and officials, and then we'll compile that data in plenty of time to get it ready for a July 10 through 12 meeting, somewhere that point we'll call a special workshop, just for commissioners to understand that budget. Got any questions with that, comments? All right. That's where we're staying on that. I don't think we necessarily have to have a motion. By the 20, by June 26, we'll set that date. So the June 26 meeting, I'll ask you to set a date and time for the workshop. That's all I have for that. I will say this, it's going very well. We, there's a lot of, a lot of departments are over budget on fuel costs, fuel-related issues and technology. For some reason, in the last budget last year, technology didn't get really hit, or didn't get increased for all the technology we needed, our servers. And so we have been replacing some of those as we need to, as our existing budget allows, but it's, we're pretty well maxed out. That's all I have for the budget. So we move on to number 14, discuss and approve La Baca County Fire Chiefs Association. I'll take the lead on this. I don't think the Fire Chiefs Association is ready to present today. The county, we do not have a fire marshal. We do not have a fire, county fire station. We do, we do not have any county fire equipment. We do put a budget together for our fire departments. It's about $40,000 per year right now. That was maxed out last year, definitely, probably went over with all the fire runs we had. We're paying $100 per run out of, out of city limits. So if, if the fires, if any fire department is dispatched out of city limits, the county pays per run. And so we know that's low, they need some more money in those fire departments. What I'm asking them to do is, we're growing, we've got lots of subdivisions, we've got lots of weakeners coming in here, and we don't have that fire marshal that we need. So I don't really need a sixth, we have five fire chiefs now. I don't need a sixth fire chief. I just need one of those five kind of be the representative of all of them, and they have done that. So what they've done is, the five fire chiefs of La Baca County formed their own association. Right now, it's an ad hoc association. They just got together to meet. And so we want to kind of ratify that in court, saying, this is the five fire chiefs that we will talk to. They'll, they'll present as a spokesperson to represent all five, all fire departments. So if one fire department needs some extra money or something, we really can't give one without the other. So we need, we need to come, we need them to work together, A. And B, we need them to voice their opinion to the court together. If they need extra funds, especially 95% of their fires are out of the city limits. That's just what's happening. So the burden is on them. They're all volunteers. City picks up a lot of their expenses. And, you know, we need to make sure that if they need money, if they need funding, that we're here to, we're prepared to help them. So that's basically the discussion on how the La Baca County Fire Chiefs Association got created. We're going to ask them to come back to court, and we'll ratify that at some later point in time. Any questions, comments on that? Nope. All right, that's all we have. I don't really need, I don't need anything on that, just discussing where we are publicly with all the commissioners. With that, we'll move into our consent agenda. Unless a member of the court requests a separate consideration of any items, all under the consent agenda are considered to be of routine nature or have been previously deliberated by the court in open meeting, and therefore may be approved by one motion, second, and vote. Do we have a motion to move into consent?
So I'm willing.
Motion made by precinct three, second by precinct four, to move into consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are in consent. We'll ask that our microphones go off at this time.